I'm going to call a meeting to order. And before we get started, I'd like to welcome Fred Kelsey as our new member to the board.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for stopping by.
Excellent. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. And watch out for these chairs, they tip over.
What they are.
How can I do this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attendance?
Right. David Kent.
Present.
Stephanie Halter.
Here.
Peter Julia. He has sent us an email, he's excused. Malik Hammond.
Here.
Frederick Kelsey.
Here.
And Tom McGlaughlin, also let us know that he will not be able to attend tonight. So we have four.
Let's review the minutes of the April 1st meeting. And Steph, you were the chair at that meeting. Would you help us through that?
Yes, so there's only one thing in there that when I read over the minutes, I wanted to ask about. And I mean, maybe I said this, I probably did, that, you know, on page two of the minutes, it says, right at the top, Halter says this is correct, is the whole fence was approved to be six feet. The taller fence was requested, but the board did not grant this. And I might have said that because we didn't really grant it, but it also wasn't in the application. Do you know what I mean? I think that was really the issue there, that it wasn't in the application.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So maybe just clarify what I said. It's one of those things that might just be missed by the intent of what I say.
Yeah.
Did that be okay?
Definitely, so.
Well, definitely previously been approved only for six feet.
Only for six feet.
Right.
So that's really the issue. It's not that we didn't want it to be, I don't want it to be down on the record saying that we didn't want it to be.
Yeah.
Any higher than six feet, because I don't think that that was the case.
It wasn't an issue to be discussed, actually.
Agreed.
Oh.
Yep, and I think the board let the applicant know that that would be a separate.
It wasn't our call.
Right, that would be a.
The applicant had to apply for an EPO fence.
Right.
Right.
Nope, that makes perfect sense.
That's all right. All right. So, any other edits?
Not that I know of.
So, can I make a motion to accept the minutes?
Well, I will. I'll make a motion.
You'll make a motion?
Second.
Yep.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Fred.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't there.
Wasn't there.
All right, so three to zero to one, that passes with the minutes as amended.
Great. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the application of public hearing for a special exception, Three Lakes Landscaping. Public hearing on the special exception for Three Lakes Properties LLC to permit the placement of an accessory material storage bins in the required 15-foot side set block of parcels 213-12000, 213-12001 merged, located on the east side of Hamilton Way. Is there someone here to speak for that issue? Name for the record, please, sir.
David, we only have four members tonight.
Pardon me?
We only have four members tonight.
All right. I'll tell them as soon as I see. Before we get started, sir, I want you to know, as you can see, we only have four members present this evening, and you're entitled to have five present at a hearing. If you want, we can delay this for the next meeting, or we can go forward with just the four. The risk of having four is, we could be deadlocked in theory, although that's seldom if ever happens. So, it's your choice.
I don't know. I mean, hopefully we can see eye to eye, it won't be a problem.
Okay, well, go forward then. Go right ahead, sir. Explain to us what you want to do.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Mario Focoretto. I'm a professional engineer and a licensed land surveyor, and tonight I'm representing Colby and Three Lakes Landscaping. Before I get into the criteria of the special exception, I'm just going to give a little background on the property, and the plans that are in front of you, give you a little more clarity to what's going on. Colby was in front of the planning board, as Joseph did a great job in his staff report, was in front of the planning board a couple of months ago for a site plan. That site plan included the clear span structure, a greenhouse, and expanded use of the land. And I guess I should have started with, I imagine that the board is familiar with this site on 25?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So, Colby, so we went through that, and with the planning board, and we showed a retaining wall, so it's a, I keep calling it a retaining wall because it's acting as a retaining wall, but it's different than a retaining wall. There is, there's a retaining, an existing retaining wall that has, it's just a waste block, gravity retaining wall, holding back about three to four feet of soil, and it is acting as a storage bin, because as it is retaining the soil back, Three Lakes has also put in some fingers on it and used it to keep materials separated from one another. That was originally approved by the planning board, that site plan, and that the existing retaining wall was originally approved in 2019.
That's on the, can you just point that out on the map?
Yes, so, on the existing condition, you'll see it here.
Right there, yeah. That's what I thought you were talking about, but thanks for clarifying.
Along the edge.
So here is the 2019 plan. Now, the setbacks are not shown on this plan, and there's no dimensions from the sideline of the property to the retaining wall. So we are not saying that the planning board approved this knowingly that it's within the setback. In my opinion, it is awfully close, and to scale, it would be within the setbacks, but nonetheless, it's there now. When Colby was moving forward, I'm going to show you the proposed site plan here.
This is what they want to do.
The proposed site plan is the same site plan that we had shown to the planning board, with some small revisions that came out of one of the meetings. We show a, we show a proposed portable concrete wall. It's identical in nature to the one that was previously approved. Prior to going to the planning board, Colby had started construction of that wall, and going off of the 2019 approved plans, he thought building it identically in the parallel with the property line, just like the 2019 plans, he didn't see an issue. With that being said, going to the planning board and showing that that is, that wall is in the setback, a special exception is required. But as said, a special exception is required for an accessory structure within the setback. There was some back and forth between the applicant and the planning board about if a retaining wall, such as this, is defined as a accessory structure. We, that was at the first meeting of the planning board, we continued that meeting, and in the month prior to the next meeting, staff had reached out to town council, who made the determination that that retaining wall is indeed, should be considered a structure. The site plan was then approved by the planning board, and we are here in front of the board now to, it was approved with the condition that we seek a special exception. The reason why I wanted to talk about it being partially built and giving you a little bit of the history is, it is built, it is not impossible to move, but it is a financial burden to do it, which will put not only, it's a burden to the company in multiple ways, where you have to move some material out, and then you have to dedicate men to this, and then, you know, move the wall, and then backfill it, and then put the material back. And that's why we're seeking the special exception versus just moving it.
Is this wall that's proposed in this plan fully built?
Mostly built. The biggest thing was, in the 2019 plan, there was a, there was a, a condition on the, by the planning board that said, salt must be covered. And so, the applicant had moved the salt storage to a bay over here, in which he spent the time to put a cover over it. So, there's been quite a bit of work to actually get this where it is now. And I believe that it meets the special exception criteria, and I'm going to go through the special exception criteria for the record as it was submitted, if that's okay with you.
Before you do that, there may be questions from the board.
Sure.
Steph, you got a question? No? Well, I do. What is beyond the wall?
The abutting parcel is quite a large parcel that is forested, it's undeveloped.
Does it continue downhill?
It kind of undulates in topography.
Okay. What's the nearest structure to the wall, other than your property?
Oof, there is a, I believe there's a building hundreds of feet.
Hundreds of feet.
Hundreds of feet.
All right.
It's all.
You can go to the criteria now, I suppose, if you want. You'll find that in the special exception, there are a series of issues that have to be addressed.
Right, you can see that, it's listed, yep.
I'm there.
Sure.
May I interject with one or two things?
Surely.
So I did reach out to the abutting parcel, we should say, sorry. Colby Lantyne, Three Lakes owner. I had reached out to the abutting neighbor, we tracked him down, Mario and I called several times, made him aware of this ongoing situation, and he was reluctant to call back, so I'm feeling quite confident that there isn't an issue in proximity to his parcel of land, being that I brought it to his attention. I mean, I probably called five times, because I figured a note from him would also be beneficial for this meeting, but also, the lack of a phone call, or any note, or any notification to the board here, or this planning board, or zoning board, sorry, kind of indicates that there's probably no issues with the setback, or, you know, falling in that area of gray. His house, or the one small structure that is there, is rented, and is, it's like several football fields, actually, up in from our property. I've never heard them or seen them. You can actually see the access in to their house, way down the road, opposite more of what was Title Cash, or now the vape shop. So, I have not had any issues with that. That stone wall, or the retaining wall that has been there for several years, I mean, I'm sure there would have been some sort of controversy if we were, you know, encroaching on his property, or doing any sort of destruction to his property. I would imagine, being that we've been there since 2019, something by now would have come up in nature. Also, back to another point of like, the real, another real crucial reason for the placement of the wall, is for trucks delivering to the bins is more of an issue than just a financial issue of moving it. The space that is needed for tractor-trailer truck, or triaxle truck, to be able to back in, needs that amount of space for the turning radius, to be able to dump material in the That is truthfully really more my issue of why it did get built out that way. As Mario did say, I thought we had approval, and from previous 2019 drawings, that that wasn't really an issue, being that everything is segmental and not permanently affixed, didn't really feel like we were hitting criteria of, you know, of the structure, and going against anything that had been approved prior. The structure of the canopy, yes, is a few hundred feet over from the original drawing of 2019, but when I had come in earlier on, those years, I didn't quite have a full vision of how this property was going to evolve or build out. So, those are really the main reasons. The retaining is just a natural, kind of makes sense to keep the grade back, because there is about a four-foot grade change to the abutting parcel of land, and that is kind of why it got laid out that way, is because there's such a tight pinch point of these parcels, that you cannot move a truck in. So that's really the hardship with the property by moving the bins. Yes, financial is definitely an aspect to it, yes, it is already installed, but the main point to drive home on the hardship is that getting in a triaxle or a tractor-trailer will not be able to make the radiuses in. On drawings, yes, it looks big. Unfortunately, in reality, when standing there, it is not quite the case. So, sorry, I just wanted to get those couple of points in as we move forward.
Two issues that you've raised, sir. First of all, hardship is not one of the criteria for a special exception.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's why I have the brains here with us, but, you know.
That's fine. Let the board get this straight. You're not asking us to approve previously was what was built, are you?
Correct. We already have the approval for that.
It's the new material.
Yeah.
However, as I understand it, no special exception was ever achieved for the original building, is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we didn't need a special exception prior, right?
It's questionable.
We had approval from the board prior.
Not from the, not.
We had it from the planning board, that's right.
So, I mean, it was here and presented the drawings of the old stuff that was here, and we built out as a.
The planning board just, they should have directed you to the, to the ZBA, because the planning board does not make those decisions.
Correct.
It's just not their role.
Yeah. I'm sorry, you know, not aware, and trying to be as.
It's okay. Most people who come here aren't aware.
Most people don't.
What have you got to say, sir? Go right ahead.
Well, I mean, just a, thank you, Colby, for that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
And, you know, he's trying to do the right thing, is what we're here to do. So, I'll go over the criteria, I believe it meets the criteria for the special exception. And first, I'll read the criteria portion, then I'll read our response. Explain how the specific site is an appropriate location and adequate size for the use. The specific site is in an appropriate location and adequate size for the proposed use, as evidenced by the planning board's 2019 approval of an identical retaining wall with a material storage bays on the same property. That structure was constructed and has remained in continuous use without any reported complaints from abutters or operational issues. The lack of negative impact over several years demonstrates that the site can support this type of use without adverse effects on surrounding properties. The parcel provides sufficient area to accommodate the wall, storage bays, and associated access while maintaining compliance with other zoning requirements, and keeping the site's functionality. Although, I think that the original wall may have needed a, which did need a special exception, and was approved without it, it's helping to serve as proof that, that this is not an, it does not create any adverse effects. It's been there for six years now, and we're going to use that as evidence, I believe, to moving forward. The next criteria, explain how the use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located. The abutting property to the south is undeveloped and forested, providing a natural buffer that helps screen the wall and storage bays from view. The design does not introduce any new noise, any lighting, or traffic impacts, and is keeping with the semi-industrial commercial context of the Tenny Mountain Highway corridor. For these reasons, the proposed wall and storage bays will not diminish the character of the area. Again, I'm going to point to the fact that this wall has been there, identical wall, for six years, and the character has not changed in that area due to that. Explain how there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to the vehicle or pedestrians, to vehicles or pedestrians. The proposed gravity wall and storage bays are located entirely within the site, and do not encroach upon any of the travel lanes, pedestrian pathways, or public rights of way. The site has a dedicated private way with clear sightlines on the Tenny Mountain Highway, and all vehicle movements related to the material bays will occur internally. There are no pedestrian facilities in the immediate area, and the design does not introduce any conditions that would create a nuisance or hazard to vehicular or pedestrian, pedestrian Next, explain how the use will not place excessive or undue burden on the town services and facilities. The proposed use will not impact the town services or facilities, as it is located entirely on private property. The access roadway is a private way that is maintained by Three Lakes Properties. And the project does not require public, the use does not require any public utilities or services. As such, there will be no additional demand on town resources, and no financial or service-related burden will be placed on the local taxpayer or any of the infrastructure. And lastly, explain how there would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located. The proposed use will not have a significant effect on public health, safety, or general welfare, as it is, it is, as an identical use was previously approved by the planning board in 2019, and has been in continuous operation without any reported complaints or operational issues. The continued operation of the previously approved retaining wall with storage bays with no adverse impacts on the surrounding property demonstrates that the site can support the use without negatively affecting the neighborhood. As such, the proposed use is unlikely to result in any new or increased risks to the public health, safety, or welfare. So again, we're not, I keep saying that it is approved, and I'm stressing that only so it doesn't appear that Colby built that wall without any approval. But again, I'm going to point to the existing wall as evidence that the special exception, the criteria have been met for this.
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
How far into the setback is it?
It's about halfway, it's about seven to eight feet. Yeah, so there is some room there, if screening needed to be put in. It is right now against the wood line, but it's not, again, it's not right on the property line.
Any other?
Is it wet in there at all?
No, the site's pretty sandy soils, we did a hydraulic analysis when we went to the planning board, but it's all pretty good soils in that area. And the stormwater actually drains away from the encroached area, and into the site.
Anyone else?
Was there any contact with the abutter, Joseph?
We have not received any contact from the abutter. We did send the standard abutter notice, but have not received anything.
Did the notice have a plan that showed the?
It did not include the plan, but the textual description of the proposal, though certainly we do sometimes receive contacts from abutters who want to stop by and see the plans, or arrange to view them online. We didn't have any contact. Usually they'll reach out, there is a phone number on there too, or email address, but nobody contacted our office anyway about it.
All right.
Any letters received?
No letters otherwise either, with regards to this application.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is anybody else, go ahead, sir.
Just to, as far as, I don't know if this is relevant, but you mentioned that you're not 100% complete on the current wall, it's whatever, 80%, whatever it is, far enough along. How is, is there any effect to the other proposed structures, and has anything started on those?
Nothing is, so the site plan approval was contingent upon this meeting, so we've been holding off on construction until we can move forward with this.
Okay.
Is this the only thing that'll be built in the setback, this wall?
This is the only thing that'll be built in that setback, yes. That's the only thing.
So, currently, you have, it looks like probably four additional buildings, as well as the wall, and none of the building has commenced for the actual buildings? Okay. The only thing that's commenced has been the retaining wall.
Yeah, and it's worth noting that the buildings that are proposed aren't stick-built with foundations. We're talking a greenhouse that I think is, and then we have a.
Sixty by a hundred, we're sixty by eighty, somewhere in that realm.
And then the other structure is a clear span, where he was going to use two storage containers and cover it, and it'll get the use out of the storage containers as well as the covered area. And then there's a gazebo. You know, his goal is to make this look nice, and I think that his, his operation looks nice now.
It does.
And he wants to continue that.
It does look nice.
Thank you.
Is anybody else here who wants to speak in favor or against this particular proposal? Is there anybody online?
We have no one present online.
Okay. You want to speak? No?
My oldest boy. He was adamant of coming tonight to see local government.
Well, good.
Good.
Excellent. All right, since no one else is here to speak for or against, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll move to findings of fact. Okay. I guess the first one would be the proponent, applications for the extension of a wall.
It is allowable within the setback?
Pardon me?
It is allowable, I mean, within the setback, with a special exception.
With a special exception.
It's allowable, right, okay. Got to finish the sentence. Only by, only with a special exception. And I think the next.
It'd be seventy feet in the setback.
Approximately halfway through the.
Approximately halfway through.
Through the 15-foot setback. I think we ought to have, that in reality, it's an extension of a wall, was approved by the planning board in 2019, but did not receive a special exception.
That the abutter was reached out to and has not responded.
Right. And no members of the public, other than the applicant, appeared at the meeting. I think we should say something about the physical structure itself, it's, it appears to be concrete.
Concrete blocks.
Concrete blocks.
Concrete blocks.
Concrete blocks lined up in a row.
With some, some, some kind of posts, right, to hold them in place?
They're on top of each other.
Those'll tell you what's in, what's there. They're in paint pails.
Got it.
I think the purposes of the retaining wall is to allow materials that are being sold at the site to be stored.
And retained.
So the trucks can dump their material, and it acts as a backstop.
We did hear from the applicant that the trucks, it is pretty narrow through there, and those trucks are really large, so to have them to be able to fit.
Let's make that a separate finding, yeah.
Have them to be able to fit the.
To turn the radius.
For the turning radius, that they need them to be further back. For the turning radius that they need them to be further back. I think this also is a business that's really developed over the last five years.
Twenty nineteen, yeah, so five, six years.
Six years, and it does look very nice on Tenny Mountain Highway.
I don't know if it is, but it appears to be a thriving business.
Yeah, it's picking up momentum every day. It's one of my most fun projects to be involved with. I really look forward to trying to build it out to be something that everyone in town can enjoy. I think it's a beneficial business, a lot of people come in and give great compliments.
We don't have anything like it, right?
You have to travel quite a ways, I mean, you've got to go over to a fun spot for your closest kind of place for something similar.
Yeah, we're Lebanon.
We have a lot of people-
We're not supposed to carry on a dialogue here.
Sorry, we're closed.
I know, I am really closing.
Joseph? Technically, what zone is this in?
So this is in the ICD industrial commercial development zone.
I think that should be a finding, it's in the industrial commercial zone.
I also think it's worth noting that the applicant has attempted to follow the rule of law as best possible. And this has occurred due to some potential lack of clarity from the 2019.
It doesn't seem like this is going to use any town services. It's not going to impact water, it's not going to impact-
No pedestrians?
No pedestrians, water, sewer, it's not going to impact at all.
If anything, there'd be environmental problems, and the planning board addressed all of those.
Yeah.
I'd like to have a, I'd like to have a short discussion.
One more finding of fact, that the planning board did approve it and all the plans with the stipulation of the special exception. You had mentioned that, yeah.
This is for the board to consider, would it be worth us retroactively approving the previous wall?
The 2019?
Can we do that right now?
Not really.
Sorry.
You need an application so that people would know that that's what's happening, but it would remove the stigma of this thing not having been approved.
Can you do that, though? I mean, would you have to have an application?
Someone has to ask for it.
The applicant.
The applicant.
And-
That would be in a different meeting.
Yeah. Okay, any more findings of fact that we should consider? Nope, okay. Let's, us go down through the criteria.
Sure.
The first one is, it's allowed by a special exception, and I think we are all unanimous that that's true.
True.
Explain how the specific site is appropriate location and adequate size for the use.
I mean, it's a tight fit, I think that's part of it, right? But I think it is in a good location. It seems to be doing well commercially.
I think we have to, this is where we should use your facts, Stephanie, about the radius needed for the trucks is a good reason for the applicant to ask for this. Mistaken or not, it does mirror the previous building.
It does.
I think that's enough in location and size for the use?
True.
Explain how the use, as developed, will not adversely affect the character and of the area. I think we ought to talk about the neighbor here.
I mean, nobody showed up to complain, we haven't heard from any abutters.
And it's hundreds of feet from the nearest neighbor.
And it's in the commercial district, ICD.
I mean, Joseph mentioned in his application future development. It's not like this is, they're putting in a foundation, right? This is, these are, these are concrete blocks.
And it is an expansion of current use, not a proposed new use.
Current, wrong use, okay.
What's that?
That's okay. Explain how, you got enough there, Joseph? Okay. Explain how there'd be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
Redefining a fact of that, right, so I feel like that's true.
Yeah, the planning board addressed all the environmental issues and approved the application there. Explain how the use will not place excessive or undue burden on the town services or facilities.
True. It's all on private land.
And finally, explain how there would be no significant effect resulting which, upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood. The neighbors didn't participate, they didn't respond.
The building seems, right now, the business seems to only be improving.
And there has been no detrimental effect in the neighborhood for the previous six years for the other wall. Okay, did you all agree with number one?
Yes.
True. Number two?
True.
Number three?
True.
True. Number four?
True.
True. Number five?
True.
True. And number six?
True.
True, true. Do we have a motion?
So move?
Second.
Move what?
So move the application for a special exception for, address to Three Lakes property at Ten Hamilton Way.
Be approved.
Be approved.
Get the motion?
Fred seconded it.
You got it, Joseph?
Got it.
All in favor of the motion as presented, aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Go for it, Zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would suggest that you clean up the record and ask for approval of that 2019, because you might, just because the government has not enforced a regulation does not mean they can't come to your place tomorrow and say this is an illegal wall.
Completely agree. I was going to ask that if you'd like us to do that, we'd be happy to do that.
I think it would be worth, you're worth, worth your while.
Absolutely.
And you can use this, and you can use this as a precedent.
Yes.
So we would just fill out, we'd be here next month again to present? Or does that even have to come to the meeting again?
Someone has to show up.
Okay. Well, they're getting really expensive, so.
You can send this young fellow, you can send this young fellow, he was the only one that wasn't dozing, so.
You can, you'll do it yourself.
Yeah, we can figure that out.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you very much, it is a big relief, and we look forward to continue working in this town.
It's nice to see a local business thrive.
Thank you, it takes a lot of, a lot of work.
Sure does.
We try our best.
Colby, I actually walked out there today, it looks great, what you're doing, it's just more and more professional looking.
Thank you, I very appreciate it.
Upgrade of Tenny Mountain, no question.
It's kind of fun anchoring that end of the highway out there.
Yeah.
I enjoy being out there and working on our project. I really look forward to the next few phases to really clean it up and make it more presentable.
Okay.
Slow and steady, it's only me, no big investors.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good evening, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you again.
Public hearing is closed. Let's move to new business, the first proposal in discussion of amendment to the ZBA rules of procedure. I want you to know that Joseph worked really hard on this.
Appreciate that, Joseph. I think you've worked hard on everything, really.
And David was a great help with this, too, with this overmaking, you know, giving suggestions. It really-
I think we, I think we could all say that the rules as previously written were insufficient for us running an orderly hearing, in my view, particularly given the example we had at the previous meeting. That was distressing, to me, that was distressing. So hopefully, we can find what we're going to try to do here. In what you handed out tonight, did you change the wording?
It should include that update, I believe that's the copy here. And just as a little background for the board, under the rules of procedure, an amendment to the rules of procedure requires a review at a public meeting, and then the vote has to take place after that first review. So you can't review them and then approve them at the same meeting, you could review them this meeting, you could make changes, but then can't vote to approve until next meeting.
So we have another meeting? Does it appear we're going to have one in July?
There has been one individual who reached out about a potential application, but nothing definitive has been submitted.
I think we probably know we have one for next month.
Oh, good point.
I'm sure he'll be back.
The, so let's run through the, the red is the things that have been altered, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. We, you can see that it doesn't necessarily have to be the month of April where we elect a chair, because sometimes we don't have a meeting-
In April.
In April. Yep, and the second, and number two is the same-
It's the same thing.
Kind of a problem. Going on to the next page.
I always forget that we could have up to five alternate members, you know what I mean? I think it would be, we could somehow work to develop that more. That would be a great way to bring in this, you know, like a steady stream of new members as people fall off the board.
Yep. The red part here takes away the necessity of having a meeting if there's no business. That's cleaning up what we've already done over the years.
Right, what you've actually done.
Yeah.
What a concept.
Yeah, and then the application deadlines.
Yeah, that's a big one.
It's a big one, they needed the most work, right?
Yeah. We, Joseph and I sat and looked at the calendars to see what would work, and we also, Joseph also looked at what other towns do. We found that three weeks is not unusual in terms of previous to the meeting. And there's no doubt that if we go to three weeks, it'd never be a problem with advertising a meeting, under any circumstances.
True.
And we didn't see that it was a hardship to anybody who wanted an application approved. There's a deadline, you meet the deadline. It's true, it takes away from the last-minute application, but that's more the responsibility of the applicant than it is of the board. If the rule's the rule, we just follow the rule. So, in a nutshell, what we've done here is moved to 21 days. Anybody have any heartburn over that? Because if so, we ought to get it out now so that we don't-
I don't, I'd say why, you know, why take on the monkey? With the last-minute stuff.
Yeah.
Right. Fred, just for your knowledge, one of the problems is, in order to meet the deadline, advertising was shifted by the previous planner to the Laconia Sun, not which everybody reads, instead of the local paper. Because on certain months, you couldn't get in the local paper advertising, where then the deadline fell after.
It's tricky.
So-
We should be in the Record Enterprise.
So if we go, we go to 21, we just, this problem just evaporates.
It goes away, because you can never really know if it's going to be in that next week with the Record Citizen.
Yeah, and this just gives the office the time to do what they need to do, all right, to carry out professional business.
Yeah, exactly, as David said, there were, there are a couple of times during the year where the Record Enterprise, you know, it is a weekly paper. Usually, their publication deadline is Friday prior to the weekly paper, but during holidays, it can be significantly extended. You know, you could be, when we calculated it out, looking at a calendar, 21 days really was, you know, what it, what it would take to get it in during those most extreme, so like the New Year's, Christmas Eve weeks, when the deadline is significantly further out.
And in number three, you simply cited the public, the state statute and the advertising time, okay? But number 3.4 is, it's now number four, is addressing the issue of incomplete application. The onus doesn't necessarily fall on Joseph, although he can advise people, your application is flimsy, the board might not be willing to act on this. It's, people still have a right to bring it to the board, but before we open the hearing on a, on an application, we have to decide whether sufficient materials for us to actually make a decision. If there isn't, we either continue it for a future meeting or deny it without prejudice to be refiled. And sometimes, I think that last meeting was a great example of-
There's been a couple of those.
Yeah. On the back of an envelope, the guy scratches out a plan and says, "This is the plan for what we're going to do."
Because on you, I mean, the application form that they filled out, this is the standard form, right? With a special exception?
Correct.
That's correct. That's for this meeting. For the previous meeting, though, I don't have it in my bag.
There's been some chicken scratch, there's been-
Right, so, I mean, and-
It was just the same thing written four times.
Yeah, literally.
And that was sad, in my view, anyway. So, this would give us the right to, before we start the public hearing on that application, to say, "We don't have enough here." And the 90 days is running, though, is that not correct?
That is correct, yep. That is, the 90-day timeframe does apply from submittal, but by calculating, you know, calculating it out, there is almost no scenario I can envision where someone submits an application and the first, you know, the upcoming meeting, if the application were not accepted, in almost every scenario, that second meeting would be within that 90 days, though the board, if there's not enough information within the reasonably, within a reasonable timeframe, the board does have that second option, which is deny without prejudice due to lack of information within a timely fashion.
Or the guy can waive the rule and say, with agreement of the board, "I'm going to waive the 90-day rule."
Absolutely, which would be to their benefit if their application is not complete enough.
Right. Because sometimes involves engineers and the like that haven't got their work done or something.
Usually don't know, people not using an engineer.
They don't. Well, this is a very unusual case, because often they'll come here before they go to the planning board.
Yeah.
And this time, they came to the planning board first, which is kind of interesting. Probably because they believe they didn't need a special exception.
Yeah, because they didn't-
Just for misinformed, yeah.
Yeah, they made an assumption, which wasn't illogical.
Generally, you can push dirt around and doesn't require a special exception. But they're doing more than putting dirt, they're building a structure.
They didn't see it as an accessory dwelling structure, right?
Yeah.
Accessory structure, where it is.
The last, number five, Joseph, can you explain us how number five changes things?
Yeah, absolutely. So this originally said, the prior version of the rules of procedure said, "The board shall decide all cases within 30 days and of the close of the public hearing." So that, that basically said, once the board closes the public hearing, you have 30 days to act on it, which may or may not be true, because really, the timeline that's dictated by state statutes, state statute is 90 days from receipt of the application at town hall. So the board could close a public hearing and then say, "We're not going to make a decision until next meeting," but only really if it complies with that 90-day timeline, because that's what's- But only really if it complies with that ninety-day timeline, because that's what's dictated to us by state statute. I mean, that is a relatively recent change to statute that made that ninety-day timeline applicable. And then there's another slight.
What would that give us as a board? Would that give us, like, the opportunity to go to council and ask questions and things like that?
I think that would be the, the scenario where the board may want to do that, not a requirement, or get a third party.
Do it very often, 'cause it is a little bit of a burden to the applicant.
Yeah, and there could be a third party, the town's engineer, you know, usually not for zoning board, but sometimes the planning board could o- often requests third-party input from the town's engineer. The zoning board could, if it, if it was.
Sometimes if an issue was really contentious, uh, and a huge crowd shows up.
Yeah.
Not everybody gets an opportunity to speak. We can continue to the next meeting or set a special meeting to continue the matter. And it could drag on. Or, in the alternative, the guy doesn't have enough stuff, come back next month.
Yeah.
Come back the month after that.
If that scenario was to happen, that it's very popular, like, how late would our meeting go? Like, what's reasonable?
When some, when one of us says, I move, we adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
And we.
So we'll get a sense of that, right?
We vote on it.
We don't really go past nine.
No.
We really don't.
It's interesting that the planning board actually has in their bylaws, the zoning board could have this. I, I don't believe you do. Planning board says, if the meeting, the meeting ends at ten PM, in order to go past ten PM, there needs to be a duly approved motion, duly approved and seconded motion to go beyond ten PM. So their meeting times out, though any instance where they've gone to ten PM, they felt there was a pressing enough need to vote and extend the meeting, but that, that was kind of an automatic mechanism in their bylaws, which, uh.
I don't know if we need, but I do think it just begs the question, right?
Yeah, let's not, let's not go there. We don't need that, I don't think. Do you think we should have that, Joseph?
I've never seen it as an issue for the zoning board. I mean, the, obviously up to the board, but I, I, it, the planning board doesn't really use it, even though they have it in their bylaws, because anytime that something like that happens, it's usually because there's something of really compelling public interest and they try their best to hear from everybody, um, though they can't always, and then they continue the hearing until a future day.
The only time I've seen it happen is when you have, like, three or four applications on one night.
Exactly.
And some poor devil is out there who's waiting for their case to be heard.
That doesn't happen to us that much.
Very seldom. If anything, we have very few applications.
Yeah.
I don't wanna discourage Fred before we get.
We don't.
And then the last piece to this number five here is a recent change to six, seven, six, three. Well, it's not a really significant change, but it, it was a slight tweak. Um, really, the intent of that tweak actually was to make it apply to planning boards as well, or make clear that it applies to planning boards as well. But it always has been the case that the zoning board, when issuing a decision, has to include findings of fact. What our rules of procedure actually said is that only if the appeal is denied, does the notice of decision have to include findings of fact. Under statute.
Okay.
You know, technically, that may pass muster under the statute.
We've always done that, right?
We've always had it to have the facts regardless of whether you're approved or denied.
Well, it's been muster on appeal to the court.
Yeah, makes sense.
Look at our findings of fact.
Yeah.
You could have an abutter who's aggrieved by our decision to grant something. Not just, not just the applicant. So.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yep.
So we'll vote on those next time?
I think we can, we can put forward a motion that we'll consider these at the next meeting.
Okay.
As presented tonight.
I can put forth that, I can make a motion if we need it.
Seconded.
Got it.
It may be seconded.
Yes.
And we'll consider this for adoption at the next meeting.
Which is July first, as it stands.
If we have one.
Correct.
God, it's June.
Yeah. Is there other business to come before the board? If you have anything else, Joseph?
No other business at this point, uh, on my end. The planning board, sometimes in the past, on zoning board, have wanted to, uh, coordinate joint meetings. I don't know if that's of interest again this year. Um, if so, the planning board, you know, the planning board's working on a few different projects, including this housing master plan chapter, which they received some funding from the, uh, Housing Opportunities Planning Grant Round Two, uh, funding. So that is ongoing at the planning board's work session, and they're also, uh, working on some, some general planning projects, including zoning amendments. Often, um, you know, one of the two boards, sometimes in the past, the zoning board has had a joint meeting at a previously scheduled planning board work session, or it could, they could come here, too. But if the zoning board wants to sort of consider that some and, and decide if that's of interest, we can certainly, I can bring that back to the planning.
Is there any update on the court actions that have come from our board?
Oh, yes. That is a good, that is a good note. Uh, let me, let me make sure I'm precise with my, with my wording here, uh, but there is such an update. So, the, all right, so as, in, in the, in the issue of, um, the lumber yard, sawmill, the, the board did, that, that application, as I think we discussed a little bit, was appealed, uh, to the Superior Court. The Superior Court upheld the zoning board's decision. The applicant filed a motion for the court to reconsider that decision. The court denied that motion and stood by their ruling, upholding the zoning board's decision. The applicant just met the deadline to appeal that decision to the State Supreme Court. So I think the Superior Court was quite clear that the, that the zoning board was acting lawfully in, in, uh, making its decision. But the, the applicant does have the right to appeal that to the State Supreme Court, uh, which they have, uh, done so. At this point, it's a bit of a waiting game, um, with regards to, you know, I don't really have any update since then, since that was filed, other than that, it, it could, it could be quite some time.
Is it still operating? There's a lot of lumber up there.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Last time I was down, down there, they were in operation.
Yeah.
This is always the hard part to say.
And the other one? The junkyards?
The, so my, my recollection, and I'm sorry, I don't have that one in front of me. My recollection is that the applicant declined to appeal that further. So I, my, but I, I would wanna double-check to make sure I'm a hundred percent accurate, but that was my last recollection of that.
So what's the town doing?
I don't.
Doesn't appear to have changed at all.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have, uh, information on that, but I can try to get some and get some information.
Sure.
Back to the board for next time.
Thank you. Okay, wonderful. Motion, Steph?
So moved to adjourn.
Second.
There we got it.